Good evening. I'd like to call this Concord Township Zoning Commission meeting to order Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. We have a relatively light schedule this evening. Under item number one on the agenda, old business. The public hearing for zoning amendment application number 0320-1 submitted by Ryland Incorporated has been tabled, so that issue will not be a public hearing today. Hopefully, at some point in time, we'll be able to move forward with that, but it's not going to happen today. Under new business, under item number one, we would like to discuss possible zoning text amendments relating to signs, accessory buildings in residential districts, and the RCD district. Heather, would you like to give us a little background and insight as to the things you've done?
So, as most of you know, I come to the board sometimes with some suggestions on maybe some updates that we need to look at in the code, and there could be various reasons why we might need to consider doing updates. For example, like this evening, in our residential conservation district development, we addressed this in our comprehensive plan. We went through a pretty extensive planning process in 2014 where the committee had made some recommendations that we may consider on updating. As far as this district option goes in our zoning resolution, I did provide to you this evening, couple, it's a two pages, that says the RCD. It's from the comprehensive plan update. And these are some of the recommendations from the plan. Some of you might have brought the plan, that's great. I just printed that one sheet out for you. Couple, you know, the first thing that they talked about was adopting riparian setbacks. So, we did adopt riparian setbacks that became effective in July of 2016. I think they're working fairly well. We may need to look at maybe a couple tweaks in there, but I'm not recommending that at this point. But, and we did adopt those not only in the RCD district, but in every district in the township. So, the second point under the comprehensive plan update was recommending some updates in regards to the yield plan standards. So, when an applicant wants to do an RCD district development, they are required to present a conceptual yield plan of how they could develop the property under the current zoning. So, if they're zoned R1 currently, then they need to lay out a subdivision showing their yield of how many maximum lots they could get if they were to develop it under R1. So, all the lots have to meet the minimum lot size, you know, 22,000 square feet in an R1 district. You've got to have 100-foot lot with the building setback line and meet all those standards. And then, that plan also has to be what they're calling, like reasonable and marketable. And those terms reasonable and marketable are very subjective, which, and I know, you know, could be controversial, especially I think with the latest RCD plan that we reviewed for the Eagle Ridge or Eagle Point development off of Culver and Road. There was a lot of questions on the yield plan. There was a lot, you know, they were proposing to mitigate a lot of the wetlands that were on there, and there were, I think there were a lot of concerns on whether or not it was really feasible and marketable to develop that yield plan. And it became, I think, kind of controversial. So, I think there's some way that, you know, we can give a little bit more standards on what is reasonable and marketable. I mean, they're recommending maybe some expanded standards here, maybe asking for a financial feasibility study, some things like that. Or one other thing that was suggested was reducing the unit credit, the bonus on the RCD plan if you're going to propose on your yield plan to basically nuke all the wetlands and nuke all the streams and just get rid of all the environmentally sensitive areas. And I think one thing that's changed too, since we initially adopted the RCD district that's really changed it is the fact that we have the riparian setbacks. So, I'm not sure how that's really working well with them coming up with their yield plan. I think there could be some improvement there. The other thing that I've heard from developers is that the yield plan, doing a yield plan and then doing the RCD plan is a lot of money. You put a ton of money and energy and work into having your engineer come up with this plan that you're not really going to build, and then basically have to do another plan to show the amended RCD plan. So, there's just a lot of things you can think about as far as how we review. And I wasn't here when we adopted the RCD, so I'd like to go back to, you know, I guess we had a pretty extensive committee that worked on that, and I don't know, Frank, I'm sure you worked on that, and Andy, I'm sure you were involved in that as well. I do know that we had Lake County Soil and Water Conservation District Dan Donaldson assisted the township with that and the Lake County Planning Commission. So, we could, if we're going to take a stab at maybe updating some things in here, I definitely want to get them involved and get their input on that too. But I think there needs to be a cleaner way to review this density bonus, this yield plan, and make it a little bit more straightforward for us as far as the township reviewing it and for, you know, the developer coming in. The number three under the gas and oil wells, I really didn't think that was a priority at this point, so it really hasn't come in, it hasn't really been presented an issue. I mean, it's not that it's not important, but we're seeing with the RCD being the more of the preferred option, I think that, well, and I guess this is really is under the RCD, but we, I guess we could take a look at that within the RCD if we wanted to establish those standards, but that, that's just another thing under there. I really wasn't thinking about doing that, but if you guys would like to, we could. The other, the other biggest component is the design features of the RCD and, you know, looking at developments that are already out there, is the township, it sounded like this committee wasn't necessarily, you know, wowed by how these developments really turned out. They looked, I guess, from what I'm reading here, looks basically like your standard subdivision, all the open space and all the protected areas are behind the lots, so you're not getting that, that feel of like a natural area within the development. So, there's some suggestions here. I guess they were brainstorming about different things that we may want to consider. I really, you know, didn't dive into, you know, looking at these to make any specific recommendations to this board. The point tonight was just to bring these three major topics up and see if you felt like you wanted to maybe tackle one, two, or all of them, or none of them, or, you know, I think that we've had a little bit of downtime, you know, with the site plan review, so I've got some extra time to start digging into some of this, you know, outside of meetings and working with some folks. But there's a long list of different things that we could consider here. So, I'm not sure if anyone has any comments or looked at any of this specifically that you want to comment on. I'm open for any thoughts or suggestions or anything.
I have a comment on gas and oil wells. Has anybody approached us about doing fracking?
What's that?
Fracking. Has anybody approached about doing fracking?
About doing what?
Fracking.
Fracking? Oh, no.
Fracking.
No, I didn't, no, I've not talked to anyone about fracking. Is that something we need to worry about here, you think?
Well, state, state, there's a big thing about that, but I, I've been personally involved with that with a couple of the communities I deal with in regards to the companies I, you know, visit for my business. And for example, Youngstown had a big issue about fracking being done in their community because, believe it or not, depending on the soil that's in any given area, you can have earthquakes. And they were experiencing that in Youngstown.
Wow.
And they were wondering what the heck was causing it. And they finally isolated it, that was the fracking, that companies that were coming in and starting to do that method of removing gas. And it got to be a big heated issue, and they eventually stopped it some years ago. So, I would just want, that was something that would be ever brought up or ever been approached in Concord, because this could be an issue.
Mm-hmm.
Because you have to watch where you do that kind of, you know, type of drilling for gas, because the soil makes a big, big difference, what kind of soils you have in a given community. So, just a point.
Yeah, I mean, I can make a note of that. I'm not sure if that's something that we're allowed to regulate or not.
No, first of all, I wouldn't want, if I was, I wouldn't want to touch with a 10-foot pole, for one thing, but I just want the township to be aware of, this could possibly come up.
Okay.
By gas and oil companies, so just keep that in the back of your mind.
Mm-hmm.
If anything, you don't want that, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
But if it comes up about it, I just want us to be educated a little bit more as a, as a board, and let people know what they could be in for.
Yeah.
Because it's a big deal around the country. Big deal. Food for thought.
Thanks, Frank.
Chairman, if you're looking for comments?
Yes, by all means.
Yeah, so with a, with a fresh look at the RCT, RCD district zoning, I really find it's well-written, but I would have to, I have to agree, once I looked at the plan update, the recommendations, particularly in the yield plan, make some sense. Not necessarily in that verbiage that's there, but some clarity for marketability, reasonable financial feasibility, things of that nature. The thing that bothers me a little bit is, is the comment in the, in the plan update about reducing yield, unit credits, if you damage, or you damage the natural resources. Well, if you're damaging the natural resources, then it shouldn't be in RCD in the first place. I mean, that's what the purpose of the RCD is to preserve the natural resources of the community. So, that, that's a part that kind of contradicts in my mind.
Well, yeah, so the yield plan is not what they really want to build.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, and it's.
But to give them credit.
Right, yeah, and then.
To give them credit by destroying or mitigating a wetland.
Even on a yield plan?
And even on a yield plan, doesn't, it seems contradictory to the intent.
Well, I think, I'll, I'll carry this a step further. I'll, I'll take this a step further. What would the appetite of this board be to consider eliminating density bonus? It seems to be a big bugaboo in dealing with the RCD, just in general. You know, I mean, what would, how would the, how would the board feel, or what would be the consensus for, you know, an alternative to, to a density bonus? Why, why, because every time we deal with, you know, anytime we deal with an RCD plan, consistently, I feel, in my experience with public hearings, that the gripe is that they're getting additional lots, so they're increasing, we're giving them the option to increase the density. And then, then there's a lot of other verbiage, and there's a lot of other ideas that get brought up, and there's a couple of them that are even brought up here about requiring, you know, an empty lot in between so many lots in a row, and doing so many different things to give, you know, to give the appearance of open space or whatever. I mean, what if we just eliminate the density bonus? I understand that the intent, and when we originally wrote the text, was to incent developers to do conservation development versus a traditional R1 or R4 development. Okay, that was, that was, and so our goal and, our goal there, our carrot that we were going to dangle in front of the developers was, we'll give you a density bonus if you decide to go with this option and therefore preserve some of the natural features and things that are, that are involved with the parcels or lots that you're looking at developing. If we, I don't know, if, maybe we should revisit the density bonus. Maybe we could reduce it as a reduction, maybe make it smaller so that it's a lot closer in terms of lot, number of lots to the yield plan, and not give such, because I think what we do is with the density bonus, then I think we, we motivate the developers and their, and their engineers to try to cram as many lots in there as they can, even though they know full well that some of the lots they're putting on there are not actually buildable lots.
Yeah.
Or they violate riparian setbacks, or they violate wetlands issues, but their goal is to try to maximize the number of lots so that they can maximize their bonus, their density bonus.
Very true.
And I think if, you know, if, if we think about it, and like I said, I don't know what the appetite is for this, but, you know, maybe we should revisit the, just the density bonus as an issue, and maybe look at reducing it or eliminating it. I mean, even maybe just eliminating the density bonus, because, you know, the concept is with riparian, because you're right, when we did, when we originally developed the RCD text, we're not, we didn't have riparian setbacks at that time when we did this. There were some other standards that we, that we did not have at that time when we did this, and now they're there, so it kind of eliminates that option for those builders to really even do some of those things. And so, my question is, is that, you know, do we, do we consider just getting rid of the density bonus and making it a, you know, and I think what that'll do, that will help the developers from a yield plan standpoint, for them to be a little more realistic in their yield plan, right? It'll, it'll help to eliminate some of those questionable lots that they're jamming in the yield plan to, to boost up the density bonus. And I think from a residential, from our resident standpoint, I think they'll feel a lot better about some of these proposals if the dense, if it's density neutral, you know, where if you can put 40 lots in on a traditional R1, and you can put 40 lots in on a traditional, with an RCD, I think you're going to see probably less pushback from the community in terms of the, because.
Yeah.
I mean, the bottom line is, an RCD is supposed to be good for the community, right? So, it's hard, it's hard for me to take a view that an RCD plan is a bad idea. I think any RCD plan is a, is a great idea from, from a community, from our community standpoint. However, I think that when, if, when the density bonus comes into play, then we start to, we start to kind of change that, that process, and it becomes a little more contentious. And if we, if we had it, if we're willing to allow a density bonus, maybe we should reduce it so it's not quite as drastic, or eliminate it so that it's, it's basically density neutral.
But then you're going to have an incentive for the developer too, Andy, I mean.
Well, I, I think the incentive is a smaller lot.
Yeah.
From what we keep hearing is people want smaller lots. They don't want the half acre, they want a quarter acre, they don't want the acre, they want the half acre.
Right.
And right there, that almost.
How does that help the builder build?
It, it, I think it goes back to the yield plan, like.
Right.
Would they really build that? You know, would they really build an R1 with 40 lots? Does that make sense to them, or does it make sense to do an RCD with 40 lots but quarter acre? And then.
And I think, and I think, and I think if, you know, yeah, that's a good point, Rich.
I mean, you've got two extra lots and they got an incentive, you know?
Right.
But if it's 40 and 40, there's really no incentive. Leave it like it was, and I, I just moved into an RCD, so I'm learning about it as a resident, you know? And I got my homeowners association thing, and I'm not allowed, I have a riparian setback in my backyard, and I'm not allowed to do anything with the last part of my property back there, but right next door, we have one acre lots, and then coming into Stone Ridge, which is our development, which is going over to Gurrel Road, they're all half acre lots with the riparian and with the conservation zoning. And, you know, I know that Dawson probably felt that he was getting a couple extra lots, and that was his incentive, but even, even at that, it's still pretty nice. I like it, it's a great idea. I like the fact that nobody will ever be behind me, I have big woods back there, and most of the people on the new street will have large woods behind them, so, but I think you need to give the builders some sort of carrot to get them to do that.
Well, and I've talked to a couple developers about, you know, going through this process, and one has said, you know, well, it would just be easier if you would just say, you know, 1.5 units per acre, you know, just flat out tell us what the density is that we can do, you know, or, you know, that way, there's no guessing, you know, with this bonus, you know? And do we really have to go through this whole exercise of developing a yield plan? So, those are, those are some of the things I've heard from people. When I, you know, looking at the, the table of required, the minimum open space and the density bonuses, I can't believe that we would give a 2% density increase with 10% open space. Like, that's not even an RCD to me, like, if you, you know, I think RCD, I would think that you would require, like, at least, I don't even know what number that is, but not 10%. I would think that in order to be a real RCD development, you would have to have more than 10%. I thought that number was very low. And, you know, we, I could go back and run some numbers on the RCDs that have already been approved, you know, how much open space, what their density bonuses were, what their yield plan stated versus their RCD plan, so we have a little bit more information as far as, you know, what's already been approved and.
And I think we've done a good job on the, on the review process when some developers have come to us with.
Yeah.
Aggressive yield plans. I think we've been able to kind of get them to temper their, you know, temper their initial estimates and remove some lots that, you know, were really, quite frankly, just weren't really real lots. So, but at the end of the day, I mean, I'm just, I'm not, I don't, I'm not saying I support removing a dens, the density bonus or, or reducing the density, but I'm just kind of throwing that out there as a, as an idea, you know, while we're spitballing this whole process, that, you know, is it something that we want to just take a look at? So.
If I may.
Yes, absolutely.
So, when, when it was generated, the RCD, Andy or Frank, the, the minimum size lot, in my, when I think of RCD, I think of cluster. Cluster and then open space, cluster, open space, but that's not, that wasn't the intent.
No, no.
Right?
Cluster's a bad word.
Cluster's a bad word.
That's not a good word.
That's one second, yeah.
You might as well just say apartment.
But clustered, clustered units, meaning they're, they're on.
Right.
There may be a lot closer together than a quarter an acre. But given how this is governed, you have a good point about the density, but also a good point about just making it cleaner and simpler by specifying a density, and saying, here's what we're going to accept. But a lot of it is, is the attempt of developers to use the last available land in this township, and the more and more land, you know it's going to be inundated with, it's not the most desirable, in other words.
Right.
So, they're going to have obstacles and challenges to develop it, at least as residential. So, it really, there's some good points here to discuss it. It should be interesting. I'm glad you brought it up.
Rich, you have any other comments over there?
No, I'm just thinking, you know, yeah, there needs to be, I understand both sides of the argument, but I do think that if I'm a developer and I own land that I want to consider making it RCD, what's my, what's my incentive to do that unless I can get maybe two more lots in there? And, you know, that gives me a financial incentive to do it, but two more lots as opposed to maybe 10 more lots. And then, there's always the question of what is the terrain like? Is it hilly? Is it wet? You know, that always comes into play, which came into play the last one we did. There were a couple wet spots there that we had to work with the developer on, but I think you could compromise that. But I think there still needs to be some sort of an incentive, and it may be how we word the bonus, but it's worth taking a look at, for sure.
Well, and I think it goes back to that, that yield plan and.
Right.
You know, getting more clarity on what we want them to present to the township as far as marketable and feasible, and what does that really mean?
But see, when you start throwing terms like marketable.
Right.
And reasonable, those are such squishy terms.
Right, and so what do we want to do with that?
Those are very squishy, you know, I think we're giving, there's too much wiggle room with those kind of terms. I think we need to, if we're going to continue that, down that path, we need to ratchet that language down.
Agreed.
You know, I think we're going to even need to tighten the screws on marketable, reasonable, buildable, because, see, I mean, the bottom line is, is I mean, I've been, you know, I don't know if you go up into some of the, some of the developments that have been done recently, I mean, there's some lots, I mean, I don't, I'm of the opinion there's no such thing as an unbuildable lot. I mean, there's, you can come, these guys can come up with a way to put a house on a lot, believe me.
Yeah.
You know, and people will buy them, they will buy them too, so I've seen houses with big ravines in the front yard. I mean, you got to come out the front door, and if you take 10 steps, you're going to go down a hill into a ravine. I mean, so it's nothing that personally attracts me, but, I mean, they, they got a house in there, and it's kind of a weird lot, but, you know, it is still a buildable lot, so, you know, I think that, I think that we need to ratchet that language down, maybe if, if we're not going to tackle the density bonus per se, then we should maybe consider ratcheting the language down around.
Yield plan.
What's, what's reasonable, what's marketable, what's sellable, what's buildable, that kind of stuff.
Yep.
I agree, Andy, yeah, and just based on what the committee had talked about, there really was no mention of the, the density bonus, and we could still look at that, but I agree, if, if we're going to keep the yield plan standards, we should maybe do some of these things that they're recommending here, and then consider some of these other design kind of features, how they lay it out. But I do like the, you know, reduce somehow, you know, if they're going to eliminate all the environmentally sensitive areas on their yield plan, that that should somehow not, not give them that additional density bonus. I don't know how you word that or what that looks like, but. So, that's, that's one area. I kind of feel like that one might be really important, since that is, you know, what we've seen developers try to utilize the last few subdivisions that have come in, other than the last couple phases of the PUD that's already been, you know, approved, part of Quail Hollow. As Rich mentioned, I believe that all the land left is going to be pretty challenging to develop, so we want to make sure that this is.
Well, it would be, you know, it would be very beneficial would be to do something with the RCD like you did with the, with the accessory buildings.
Oh, yeah, go through and do all the numbers.
Yeah, go through and put together a spreadsheet that would show us the development, what the yield plan was, what the density bonus was.
I can do that.
What it ultimately ended up being as far as the number of lots, or, you know, the number of homes that were actually built.
Yeah.
Because that, that, I think that will, because going by recollection.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Versus seeing it in black and white, and you can actually see what went on, will be very helpful, because maybe we'll review what actually has taken place, and maybe the density bonus really hasn't been that big of a bad thing, you know? It may have not really been taken.
Yeah, I'd be happy to put that together, I can just bring that.
That would be, that would be nice to have that tool for the next, if we have further conversations on this topic, to put together a nice little history of what's gone on.
Mm-hmm.
It's helpful.
Yep.
Okay. Oh, the other, the other paper that I had provided is just a, from the Lake County subdivision regulations, because we do reference that the amended RCD plan has to have all the requirements that are shown on the sketch plan for a subdivision, so I just had that in your packet as a reference, so you kind of knew what we are expecting to see on the RCD plan when they do submit it to the township. Even with the last one that was submitted, the scale of the plan was a 1 to 100, that the developer brought in, which to me made it very difficult to see every feature that you wanted to, and it was all on one plan. So, I kind of hope that, you know, if we go through this, maybe we could specify a little bit more cleaner, like, give us an existing conditions plan on a separate sheet, then give us your RCD plan of how you proposed to lay it all out with your proposed grading and all that kind of stuff, but cramming it all on one plan at a scale of 1, 1 to 100, it, you miss things, you know, you can't see it all. So, I don't know if we can consider putting in some preferred scale or. see it all. So, I don't know if you can consider putting in some preferred scale or, you know, or not. But there was a couple other things that I, I noticed just going through this process with the township that I think would make it easier. And really identifying where all the natural features are on the property, where the, the large trees that you really want to keep versus the scrub trees or second generation forests and things like that. That, to me, was never really clear on plans that were submitted. So... But, okay. Kind of all I really had on that, just to bring that topic up to you as far as something that maybe we want to consider working on.
If an engineer is trying to get away with a small scale plan.
Yeah.
Any other comments from the board on this topic? Y'all good? Everybody get their...
Yeah, even a 1 to 50 would be a lot. Right?
Right.
I could like, you could do the overall, but then give me the detail, right? All right. The next area that I wanted to bring up to you has to do with accessory buildings. And accessory buildings, most specifically in our R1 and R4 districts. One thing that, one thing that I've noticed even just in the six years I've been here is that the BZA has seen quite a few variance requests from property owners in the R1 district that have less than two acres of property, but they would like to have two detached accessory buildings. Our zoning code currently states that if you have less than two acres, you're only allowed to have one, and it can be as large as 1,024 square feet. I did provide you a spreadsheet of that. And this was, I think Kathy Mitchell had started this in 2000 for something that, or, like, when you guys redid all of the accessory buildings maybe 10 years ago, in 2010, you did a pretty extensive update on that. I'm not opposing to switch all of that. I'm suggesting that maybe we look at the lots under two acres and determine whether or not maybe we need to change the limitation of one building. So of the, and I kind of sorted this based on the type of request. Some of these had, they had two variance requests under the same application. So, for example, the first one on the list, they had a 0.56 acre lot. They were asking for a second building. They already had one that was 960 square feet. And then they, actually, they ended up getting approved to do a second one at 144. But I did run, you know, of the 65 variance requests that had to do with accessory buildings over the last 20 years, 32% of those, or 21, were related to wanting more than one accessory building. And of those cases, of the 21 cases, 17 were approved and only 14 were turned down. So, and actually, this month, we have one other case coming up for BZA. So there's another one. So I just wonder, I, it makes me think, you know, is something wrong with the two acre threshold? Or are we good and they shouldn't be granting these variances? And that they need to be more firm on them? Or do we want to maybe consider allowing, you know, maybe coming up with a different threshold of, you know, not maybe, I'm not sure where the two acre came from, but in the R1 and the R4 districts, you know, the minimum lot size, if you have no sanitary sewers, 0.75 acres in the R1. I did print that out just for reference here. And in the R4, you're at, you're at one acre for a single family dwelling. So, and then when you're in the R1 and you have sanitary sewer, you're just over a half acre, at 22,000 square feet. So, this doesn't affect the RCD. They're under different standards. They're, they're only allowed to have one, no larger than 200 square feet. So, they're, they're in a different section. But under the R1 and the R4, specifically the R1, several variance requests, a ton of these have been approved, which just made me start thinking that, is this something that we need to re-look at or not? Some people live in an older home where their outbuilding is, is their detached garage. So they have a two-car detached garage, which counts as their one accessory building.
Right.
So, it's hard for them, like, because it's not attached to the house, and then therefore they're not allowed to have another outbuilding unless they go for a variance.
Right.
Other folks, they just, they have an attached garage, maybe a two or three-car attached garage, then they have a, a large barn on the property that they're just using for stuff, that not agricultural or anything like that. And then they want to have a she-shed or, like a shed for the wife. This has come up several times. It was like, the man wants the garage and the wife wants the gardening tools and that shed. So, I don't know, it's just...
I think that's a valid point. As long as you have your, your maximum limit, what is it, 1,024? 1,024 square feet? If you had two and you added them together and didn't exceed that, I don't see anything wrong with that because the, the buildings could have totally different purposes. For example, guy collects cars, so he wants to put a couple of cars in this building and he doesn't want tools and everything else in there. So he has a little tool shed over here and his car, or his boat, or his wood shop, or whatever he has. He doesn't want a mix of uses. As long as you keep it capped at the two buildings, you can only have two, not three, and they don't go over 1,024 square feet, I don't see anything wrong with that.
I wonder if you're on a half acre lot versus a 1.9 acre lot, you know?
Yeah.
Or if you're...
Yeah, 1.9 is...
You know what I mean? And, and then maybe, maybe even with, thinking about it, like, maybe we would want to have some distance between the buildings. Currently, we don't have any distance requirements even between the dwelling and the accessory building, or if you're going to have multiple accessory buildings, we have no distance requirement. So, I think for safety concerns...
If you look at the numbers, 1,000 square feet is, that's a lot of building. That's a lot of building, okay? It really is. And if you have somebody that has a, a building on their lot and they're looking, and like you said, like it's a barn or something that was pre-existing or garage, detached garage, I mean, to put a six, you know, for an example, like to put like a 12 by 16 storage barn, which is a pretty decent sized storage barn. 12 by 16 is a pretty good size. And that's a, what's 12 by 16? 190, 140, 150 square feet? That's not very much. I mean, it really isn't. What's, what was, what was the number?
Was it 200?
Yeah, 12 by 16 is what? That's 192 square feet. That doesn't even put a scratch on that 1,000 square feet. I mean, it really doesn't. And that's a, and a lot of people would be very happy with just a storage barn...
Yeah.
To put their garden implements, maybe park the tractor, you know, their weed whacker and their leaf blower and some garden tools, a wheelbarrow, you know? That's, so I don't, you know, I think sometimes penalizing, you know, I think the penalty sometimes for something that you're inheriting because you're buying it, you didn't do it. Or look at, look at people that maybe they have a house, they've got a, a storage shed, and now they're going to put an in-ground pool in and they want to put a pool house out. Put a pool house in, right?
Yep.
They can't put a pool house, right? They already got, they already have their storage shed, so they, they've got their, if they're on less than, you know, less than the required acre, they got their outfit, they got their accessory building.
That's true.
They can't put a pool house in. And a pool house would be a very nice thing to have. It would be very convenient. And we're not talking, you know, a 30 by 40 pool. You know, you're talking, again, something probably the size of a storage shed, you know, 16 by 12 or 20, 20 by 12 or something like that, you know, we're talking a couple hundred square feet. I don't think that's a big deal. So do we want, do we want to inhibit that kind of accessory building, you know, usage if it makes good sense to do, you know? I don't know. I know I have a neighbor that has a, he has more than, more than an acre but less than two acres. He built a, and he has got an in-ground pool. He's got a really nice building next to the pool. And now he would like to put a storage shed in, but he can't because he's got the, the building with the pool. So he'd like to put, because the building with the pool is not a storage shed. It's a, it's kind of a, you know, accessory building that's more for the pool, more for the pool than recreation use than it is for utility. So, he'd like to put a, he'd like to put a storage shed in too, but he can't because he's, he's got, he's less than the requirement. He's, he's got his one building and he can't do anything more. So...
It's hard to have one building that meets all, all needs, you know? Can't be a pool house and a, you know, a tool shed or a car barn or a boat barn or a wood shop. It can't all be in one, you know?
Right.
It almost has to have multiples if you're going to have that.
I have two questions to check. So Heather...
Yes.
Typically, BZA, a variance, they demonstrate hardship to get an approval. So, it, there, I see all these approvals...
Yeah.
In your experience, what they're reporting, they're, they're able to demonstrate a hardship to get these variances? There's quite, there's all sorts of numbers here.
I know, yeah.
I'm not sure I understand.
So most of these have to do with setback standards. So, the second, you know, the first...
First pages.
Page about halfway, two-thirds of the way down have to do with the number of buildings. And then everything else, front yard, rear yard, side yard, those are setback requests. But back to your question, so this would be considered an area variance where they are supposed to prove some kind of practical difficulty with complying with the district requirement of only one outbuilding. Now, some people, you know, they go up there and they argue about the mixed uses and, look, this is, I have my detached garage, my cars are in there, and now I have this pool and I really need a pool house. So we've seen those kind of arguments. I don't know how that really, if you go through the Duncan factors, if that really checks off the list, you know? I'm not going to, you know, but um, you know, I know that the BZA, sometimes they look at, okay, what's the combined square footage of the two buildings? We know this guy has a, like, for the first one, we know this guy already has a 950 square foot building. Now he wants his 144. I didn't look into the details of any of the cases, so I don't really know what the specifics were, but what does that put him at? Oh, I don't know. He's probably over the 1,024. But I've seen people trying to use that argument too in front of the board, and they've kind of looked at that. And some of it has to do with if there's opposition, or is the lot really close to two acres? We've had some requests, you know, where they're just under, where they're at one, you know, one and a half acres or... So I, I'm not sure lot size is coming into play when they're, when they're making that decision.
Then it, then is it the BZA that is suggesting we...
Well, no, the BZA didn't ask you to take a look at it. I just noticed that they're granting these all the time. So, and so I just thought I would just bring that up to you. They didn't specifically say, hey, you need to go talk to the zoning commission about fixing this, you know? I was seeing a trend and I thought, well, I just bring this up in case this is something that you guys want to look at. This is not, you know, that, like, in the scale of priorities, it's not high. You know, just another, something small that maybe we could, I mean, we could even do this later on as, you know, coupled with some other minor amendments, you know, it's not, or not at all. We could just leave it at this too. I just thought I would bring it to your question.
The second point, Mr. Chairman, is, is the, the single building, the reason it was a single building number permitted is related to proximity to the neighborhood, the neighbors and/or aesthetics, or just general, multiple outbuildings on a property that may deter from property value for the neighbors. Is that the genesis of why there's only one? But the variances are being granted to give them more than one. So I, I always go back, what was the rationale of one? And, and I always respect the author, you know, or the authors that generated this. There had to have been a lot of thought into it, why it was done this way. And I'm presuming that's why, the, the single one, as opposed to, well, allow three or four buildings as long as they don't meet 1,024. If that was, if that was my neighbor, I would be a little clustered by that. There's no doubt, no doubt.
1,024 is a pretty good sized building.
It's a pretty good sized building.
Because I bought it. That's, that's a big bill.
Right.
I bought a three-car garage space.
Yeah.
So you guys want to reduce that now? Did you want to make that smaller or no?
Well, man, the BZA has a lot of flexibility. Because I know in my neighborhood alone, people ask, they come up to me because I'm on, they know I'm on a zoning commission, can we do this? In essence, I try to say, well, it's not that you can't do it. A lot has to do with what you're going to do with your building. And I have a building right now in my development. Rich pointed out about cars. This gentleman has three antique cars. He built a separate building for it with a second level. He went up.
Wow.
And what they did was, and he's a real nice guy, I don't want to underestimate him. The building looks nice, looks nice. But it looks like a second house on this property. And the thing is, they just went to the neighbors on both sides of him, asked them if they objected to it. And they said no because they saw what he was going to build. And they gave it to him. They said, okay. So we, there wasn't really any strict guidelines that we set up here that would stop that. And since the BZA has so much flexibility, unless we really put some governing, you know, restraints on them, this is the way it's been. Even, even my neighbor next to me, he built us a little horse and shed. It was a playhouse for his kid. And as the kid grew up, of course, and now they're out of college and grew away, he wanted to extend this to make it a storage, but it was right up against my property line. But my neighbor came up to me, said, Frank, would you mind if, you know, it's here, I just want to expand it out just a little bit. And I looked at it, I said, to me, it wouldn't bother me because it's way at the back of my property. So, as far as I saw it, it wasn't. He did a real nice job, closed it all in and put sliding on it and everything, windows and all that. But again, the BZA came and just said, would you object to it? And I said, no, I don't. It's fine. It's not, it's not a nice floor for me. As a matter of fact, it looks nicer than the house that he built for his kid, you know, playhouse. So, he went up, he did it, and it looks fine. But that's how the BZA basically tries to work with the neighbors. If it fits in and it's not a nice floor per se in the development, I think that's the way they've granted a lot of these over the years. And that's how it's been done. So unless we as a board put a lot of governing restrictions into something like this, then I think that's going to be a big effort. You might want to consider how we want to react to this, if this is going to be an issue. Because I know the BZA comes to us all the time. In a sense, it says, what can I do? You know, this guy's coming. Is it okay? They ask us to try to help them, but then again, we don't have a lot of stuff in here governing any kind of excessive restrictions other than when we put the square footage down. And that's it. As long as it doesn't exceed the size of the building, the main building structure, which is the home, they normally give them the okay to do that.
Well, even if you add more restrictions, they can always ask for variances from every single one of those, so...
That's what the board's for.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what the board's for.
But it is, it is kind of unusual, I think, that they would even grant these. Because how can you really truly prove a practical difficulty in complying? Just what, you have too much stuff, you know? So, I, I mean, it is the way they voted. So, I, I don't know. I mean, I know we had, we had a case last month that the applicant was in front of the board. He already had two detached accessory buildings. One of them was non-conforming. It was like 2,300 square feet size. And then the other one was smaller, like 300 square feet. And he had just put in a new in-ground pool and a fence and everything. And he wanted to have another, he called it just a storage shed for his pool equipment. He didn't call it a fancy pool house. And they ended up turning them down, you know, really because it was, you've already got all the square footage. You're way over what you're allowed. And, you know, you're, you're, you're close to two acres, but, you know, he brought pictures of all, all of the stuff he had inside the buildings, which I don't think helped because it was just cramped half full of, you know, stuff. So, I don't know. It's, it's interesting watching them make their decisions on that. But like I said, it just came up, you know, a bunch. So I thought I would bring it up to see if that was something that you think that we need to tweak or, or not. You know, maybe it's, you know, maybe it's the BZA having to scrutinize those a little bit harder, you know?
Personally, I think it has merit. I think it has merit for considering two. There's that guy up on 84 and 44 that has all the outhouses. He must have about five outhouses in his yard. Now, that's crazy.
That's art, right?
And art, yeah. And gas pumps, but that's crazy. I understand that. But, but two neat buildings that don't exceed 1,024 square feet, I don't see a problem.
Or maybe there's some exception, like if your first accessory building is your garage...
Yeah.
That you should be allowed to have...
True.
Some other smaller shed or something like that. I don't know. There's different ways to look at it. Most houses now that are being built have attached garages. It's the, the older homes that have a detached... homes that have a detached where that, where that comes up, so. We can just hang on to that information.
Any other comments on the accessory building stuff?
Let's tackle signs.
Okay.
Let's do signs.
Signs, all right. So, I know that the township went through a pretty comprehensive sign code update that was adopted beginning of 2014, I believe, right here.
That's about right.
Yes, um, you even hired a planning consultant that helped you go through that whole process, correct?
Right.
Uh, did you hire a consultant, right? Okay. Um, since then, there was a pretty significant Supreme Court case, Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, I know we talked about that, uh, a while back, roughly, or briefly, um, I did give you like a summary of that case that came out shortly after that, um, but, uh, we haven't had the opportunity to kind of relook at our sign code after that, but there are some things in here that I'm concerned about, that may, um, just, okay, let me, let me start, yeah, there's some things in here that are content-based on the signage. So, like, if you have to read the sign to know how to regulate it, then it's content-based, which means you could be subject to strict scrutiny from the courts. So, when you say a real estate sign, or a project construction sign, or, you know, those type of signs, um, then you may get into trouble with favoring one type of speech over another. So, in order to protect everyone's First Amendment rights, you should not have to read the sign to know how to regulate it. So, you can regulate the location of the sign, the size of the sign, how long it can be up, but you really can't make a differentiation between the message on the sign. So, I listened to, um, I did a webinar not that long ago, that the International Sign Code Alliance put on there, and, you know, I gave you just a couple of slides in here, but basically calling out political signs, real estate signs, grand opening signs, and calling them out specifically in your code and regulating them differently, um, could get you into trouble. I think our, just looking at our code, um, you know, our, our permanent signs in most of our districts, or our permanent signs were fairly good. It's our, it's our temporary signs where I'm seeing a lot of references to what the message says. Um, and I, I did print out just that one section, the resolutions, what was it, might have not, or, compared to the others. Was there 30.09? 30.09A, you talk about temporary signs in all, in all of the zoning districts in, in the township. And, um, so the first one is a freestanding project construction sign, and we have definitions, I think, for all of these that are in, in the section, but basically under this, you're allowed to have one project construction sign, 32 square feet, it has to be setback 10 feet, but it's only allowed to be up during the time of, that the building or project is under construction. Then, if you move, and to, uh, to A2, we're talking about a freestanding project contractor sign. Now, with these, you're allowed to have one, and it's only allowed to be four square feet, and no taller than three and a half feet. And this one has to be removed within two days of the completion of the work being And then, then we kind of group together political and real estate signs, we have no, no standards as far as size, height, or setback requirements, and, and a section later on, we prohibit all the signs in the public right-of-way. But there really are no standards on that.
Yeah, we talked about, I remember when we talked about political signs.
And that's touchy, right? And I don't have a legal opinion on that, so we'll definitely have to talk to legal about political signs, but go ahead, I'm sorry.
About like limiting the number of political signs, like if, like when we were, you know, you see somebody that's got a lot affronted, so they put a sign, you know, they put like 30 signs in their front, politicals, it's like, do we really, you know? And I, I, I was, wasn't thinking right that day when I brought up the fact that maybe we should consider limiting that, because that was like a big no-no. A big no-no, that got shot down really quick by legal, because of the, like, you know, because of limiting free speech, so.
Right.
You know?
And I think political signs are gonna be tough, even if we do try to update the temporary signs, I'm.
Yeah, I don't think you'd have touched that one. I really don't. I think that's a losing, that's a losing argument. My, my brother's a trustee in Motville, and he said two political signs were put up on the town hall property last night. He was gonna take them down, and then he checked into it, and they said, as long as they're 100 feet from the door, they're allowed to be there. So, even though it's on township property.
Wow.
Yeah, that's a bugaboo.
Yeah.
Is there a limitation to political signs in size?
No, nothing.
Sorry, political size, signs in size?
No, currently there are no size limitations at all.
No, as many as you want, as big as you want.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. No matter, cause it's temporary.
Some big ones out there.
Just for the period of the election cycle either year, there's a timeframe when you can start putting them up, and then after the election, you take them down, so it's, they're, they're just temporary, so it's a temporary ice storm.
Same thing with like real estate signs, we just say you're allowed to have them. We don't have any restrictions on that, those don't really become a problem, other than the weekend things, people put them at the corners, they're illegal, and usually they're gone by Monday, you know, kind of.
Yeah, the only thing, I think, the only thing that I think that recently, at least in, in more current issues, that has come back to, to kind of haunt us a little bit, is the Verizon building sign that they've put up, you know, I mean, they got.
Yeah.
A big Verizon on the side of the, on all, on three of the four sides of the building, you've got two foot or bigger, I'm not, you know, it looks like at least two feet or maybe, maybe even bigger, the words Verizon on, on the building, and then they put up a gigantic Verizon sign, freestanding on top of that, you know, and, and they, because they could, right?
Unfortunately, there was a loophole, they, they were allowed to go, was that 20 feet?
No, I think.
Or 30 feet or something.
I think it was 30 feet, yeah, I think it's 30 feet, yeah, it's.
And there was like a bonus being a corner lot, if you put it on the corner, it was like.
Yeah, it was, that's probably one of the more recent things where.
Right.
It was kind of an egregious, you know, take advantage of the code, you know, type of thing to, to put up, I, I, I think that sign was completely unnecessary. But they could do it because they were allowed, so.
Which we did change that.
Right, right. But that was one, that's one that's in, you know, that people can relate to, because it's, it didn't happen that long ago, and it's, it's, it happened, you know, it's pretty, pretty obvious, where signs can come back to kind of fight you.
Well, and with the, um, just looking at the sign resolution, like I said, I think we're fairly good on our permanent signs, there might be a couple small things, but, um, and I would, you know, but looking at the temporary signs again, like we go in, then we talk about just in residential districts, you know, we have regulations that say you're allowed to have one temporary sign promoting a garage sale, you know, so what if their sign said something else, like, you know, and it wasn't promoting a garage sale, and then we got a complaint from a neighbor, and, you know, we wouldn't be able to really enforce this, you know, is what I'm saying, because in order to, in order to enforce the resolution, we have to be able to read the sign, or how to, how to enforce the resolution. So, in this, and even with this, we don't even specify, specify a size of this sign that they're allowed to have. So, I just have some concerns about that, um, even in our commercial districts, um.
How are we doing, how are we doing with enforcement on that, Heather?
Which?
With the, with the, uh, like, for example, like the freestanding project contractor sign. And so some landscaping company comes, and they're gonna do landscaping at your house, right, well, they want to put a landscaping sign out. It's very states, and within two days of completion of the work, they've got to remove the sign.
We really, I mean, how will we even know when the work is done? It's really not that easy to enforce, I mean, unless it was like a complaint, like, you know, my neighbor's had his power wash car, you know, sign in, for two years in the front yard.
Right.
Like, even with that, I would be hesitant on, you know, doing anything, because if it, if it said vote Trump or vote Biden, like technically it would be a political sign then, and I couldn't say anything, you know, and it goes back to, why do I, I shouldn't have to read the sign to know how to enforce it, but if they're clearly in the road right-of-way, that, that's another thing, we'll pull signs that are in the right-of-way, not political signs, because we're not gonna upset, you know, that kind of thing, this would be, but then there we are again, like, picking enforcement based on what the sign says, it, it, you can really get in trouble for that, so.
What is your reason for not taking signs on the right-aways that are political?
Cause they're all in the right-of-way. If you drive around, they're virtually all in the right-of-way. The road right-of-way is actually like in a, in a subdivision, is probably about 18 feet back from the curb. So, if you don't have your sign like basic, you know, like 20 feet back from the edge of the pavement, you're in the road right-of-way. It's a, in a subdivision on, on.
Every one.
Yeah, I mean, most streets, it's a 60-foot road right-of-way, even, you know, Girdle and, and Ravenna, um, the ones right across the street here, you know, that are all on the vacant lot, they're, they're probably in the road right-of-way, I don't remember exactly, they're not as close as some, but.
There's a lot of violations.
Yeah, there are, and this year, this is the first year I've actually gotten some complaints about political signs, where I've had to go and talk to people about moving them back, because they're blocking intersections, cars pulling out of developments, where people can't see to make the turn, things like that, so.
It's not a matter of free speech, it's a matter of safety.
Yeah, right.
Public safety, when you get into the road right-of-way, that's why, you know, the road right-of-way is a problem.
Yeah.
And then you get some of those big signs, you know, put that in the road right-of-way, I mean, it can, that's, that can, yeah, cause an, cause an accident.
Yeah, there was, there was one on Ravenna and, um, Exmoor at the corner there, and it was, you, you couldn't see over it at all, it was one of those big political signs, and there's a couple like that this year that, you know, talking to people, don't move them back, you know, they'll do it, and it's not a big deal, but we don't have any size restrictions, there's, the only thing is, we say not the right-of-way, but we're really, we're not really, you know, enforcing that and pulling them. Technically, under the resolution, we have the authority to, to pull any signs that are in the right-of-way, um, we would not do that with political signs, we would work probably with moving them back if it was an issue, as a visibility type issue, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So, so Heather, I'm, I'm just a little confused.
Okay.
So, it, it, the, the Reed, the Reed case talks about being content, uh, content neutral, are you saying that, or are you surmising that by saying political real estate signs, we're talking about the content?
Yes.
And that we need to modify that language to be content neutral?
Correct.
And just call it a sign?
Right, call it a yard sign, call it a wall sign, yes, call it something else other than, um, right, so that, I'm sorry, that brings me back to, yeah.
Right.
Signs that are permitted, you know, you can regulate the type, you know, the structure of the sign, is it sidewalk sign, an A-frame sign, you know, and we have some restrictions on it, and I think we call it a sandwich board sign, um, the banner signs, you know, we can't call it a for sale sign, or, you know, but a lot of these signs are really just yard signs, and instead of saying a, a real estate sign, we can call it a yard sign, or.
I see, yep.
Yes, thank you for bringing, for asking that.
Okay. Say, Heather, we don't have any language in that says the sign can't be inflammatory, verbiage, do we?
No.
So, someone, I mean, I saw a sign because of the election in Painesville, that, it was kind of bad.
I don't think we're allowed to do that.
You can't do that at all, no?
Someone called me and complained, there was one over on Button Road that has a curse word on it.
Yeah.
And they were like, can you make them remove it? And I'm like, unfortunately, no, I can't, it's, it's your freedom of speech, you know?
Well, it's just a shame, because you know, you can, you can put verbiage in such a way that it can cite riots. We already have an individual that sort of does that already, in a sense, so, uh, and that, that, you know, when you can excite people to become violent with the verbiage and the, whatever you might say, that's, you know, it's just like saying fire in the, you know, theater, that, that can be kind of devastating sometimes, especially in the times that we live today. People get irate sometimes, and it really causes devastation, you know? You take out their anger in such a way, that's, that's a shame.
I don't think it's very common for me.
Oh, it's not common.
Yeah.
But it does happen, though.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, so procedurally, how does the board initiate or go through text changes or suggested, is that something you go to start?
Traditionally, we do like a work session, you know, Heather will, you know, just like she's done today, she'll put together some ideas that we should discuss, and then we go through work sessions, we, we kind of put together what we're comfortable with, and then there would be a public hearing.
Okay.
And then, you know, go through the normal process, so.
I assume there's times when you do hire a consultant, like, so complex text, things like you did with DBR, hard?
Yeah.
Yeah, for the most part, I, we haven't really, we haven't really engaged professional advice on too many things, the majority of the time, we kind of noodled ourselves, but.
Well, um, since I've been here, we haven't hired a consultant, but you guys had just redone your sign resolution, and then the town center, the town center language was, Mark Majewski helped with that, because he helped write the comp plan update, so.
Correct.
He wrote that as well.
I saw that, okay.
But, yeah, I think if we were gonna do something really significant, we, you know, we would look at hiring.
Yeah, it's always good, yeah, I think it's, there's, there's definitely value in bringing in a third party for, you know, for some consulting.
Yep.
If it's a, if it's a pretty, you know, it's a pretty big issue, or if it's something that there's some, some legal wrangling that could be potentially, or some entanglements that could occur, you know, that we, it would be good to have a third party come in and, and advise us or guide us through that process to keep us out of the, the legal tanglings that could come with it, so.
Thank you.
There's also times that we get Heather to research other communities, what they've done.
Sure.
And look at some of the language they've used to also help us. Uh, we've done that too, in the past, too.
Any other comments from the board on signs?
I think, you know, if, if we do decide to look at the signs, we're definitely gonna have to, um, work with our legal counsel on that too, and, and, you know, make sure that they're being, being, you know, we may recommend, you know, cause it, it's a very sensitive subject here.
Great, sure.
Thank you, Heather, once again, great work.
Thank you.
Appreciate the, the information and the presentation, it's always quality work that you put forward. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the September 1st, 2020 Zoning Commission meeting, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I saw whether we accept the minutes as written.
I'll second that motion.
A motion made and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm gonna abstain, because I, somehow I didn't get my packet in the mail.
Okay.
So, I didn't get a chance to.
So, we have three ayes and one extension, where you won the, you can't vote, you weren't part of the, right, so, nothing personal.
That's fine. Okay.
You abstained.
We'll take your eye as, we'll take your eye as a participatory eye.
Okay, I'll abstain.
Okay, so the, uh, the, the minutes are approved as presented. The next item on the agenda is the correspondence report by zoning commission members. Frank, what do you have?
I had several of my neighbors approach me a couple weeks ago about the Van Loon property, I mean, that's the Conservancy, because they've had vandalism back there, and they've had fires and stuff back there, and burned some of the building up already, and they asked what the township could do about that.
Really?
So, I approached Heather, and she did some research for us, and the property owner who owns it, which is Silver's, finally brought in some people, and they took down the building that had been somewhat destroyed by the fire, and made it less chance of somebody getting hurt back there, and that's what they were worried about, kids going back there, cause they're back to. Kids going back there because they're back there all the time doing things. Unfortunately, they even, I was told, I don't know this for a fact, but I was told that they even, sheriff's department arrested some of them for drug abuse that was happening back there on that property. So that was, that was the thing I got involved with this, this couple of weeks, so.
Any correspondence? Would you like to share?
I had none.
None?
Nothing for me, Mr. Chairman.
Nothing?
Other than the erroneous email from Delaware County, I had nothing.
I was also copied on that email.
I saw that.
I don't have anything to report. I didn't get any correspondence. Audience participation, don't rush to the podium. Take your time, one at a time.
Single file.
Anybody on the phone?
No.
Preoccupied. Nobody's even on the phone?
No, I'm not on the phone right now.
Come on, with this, this has been an exciting meeting. I can't believe we didn't bring at least.
There was one resident that I emailed last night that was planning on listening to it, so I don't have to.
Okay. So the audience participation, we're going to mark that as a completed, with no participation. Uh, the next meeting of the zoning commission is scheduled for December 1st. My goodness, the year is over. Are we good for December 1st? Do we have any, do we have a chopped full agenda again, or?
Well, we'll see what happens with the public hearing, and I can come back with some of the stuff coming our scene. If you guys think of anything, feel free to email me if there's something available that or bring to you or send you in advance or, you know, you know, communicate with us more.
Yes, by all means, we, we encourage the members, if there's something, if there's an issue that's burning that you would like to bring to the forefront, do not hesitate. You know, by all means, we'll get it on the agenda.
Like the property Frank was referring to?
Yes, exactly, exactly. I'm really surprised.
That's weird here. I never knew that they could get them.
Wow.
It's, is that the one, the entrance right off of Mount Park?
Yeah, there's an entrance, it's, well, it's not quite an entrance, it looks.
It was an entrance.
It's been grotted over, over the years because of, you know, that's considered still under the consortiumship for 100 years. Well, maybe it's less than 100 now, that was voted on probably five years ago, so right now 95 years maybe. Again, if they can build where the home that Mr. Van Loon lived in and the area of her, uh, house buildings and stuff, that can still be built on if it stays residential. But see, the land was turned over to a consortiumship. And right now, uh, even though you'll see a, a big sign on Route 84, 30 acres, develop a land, that's misleading because, because of what that land has been. Because she turned it over to a consortiumship, didn't want her property to be built on. Okay? So they're actually taking care of it, but the property technically is still owned by Silver's. He bought it, he's been trying to sell it off because he knows he can't build on it. So he's got more or less his hands tied. In the meantime, the home that she lived in started to deteriorate and it started being vandalized over the years. And the people who's brought, what's up to that, you know, have seen this stuff happening. So that's what was brought to my attention about, they did set the place on fire. And based on that, of course, all the other things, if you go back there, there's a lot of bad graffiti that's on the buildings that are still standing. It's terrible. I mean, it's, how kids are going to even speak that way, it's beyond me, but anyhow, they did. Silver's did have, like they say, someone come out and take down the parts that already had burnt to a more safe level from what the neighbors tell me. But there's still some buildings that are still there. So kids do still go back there and play around and do their thing. And it's quite a shame, and the neighbors worry about somebody getting hurt back there, you know? I would think, and this is only my personal opinion, that if I was Silver, I would take everything down completely. Because technically, I'm sure if somebody gets hurt, they could probably sue him because that property actually still belongs to him. So, but this is the thing that's been ongoing because of my involvement, because I live in the neighborhood. So right now, they told me it's been taken care of to a point, it's, they consider it somewhat safe, but there's still some things still standing yet.
Anything else the board would like to discuss? With that, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.